A reminder to all speakers tonight to please slow down your naturally rapid speech pattern so that our interpreters can translate accurately. We are privileged tonight to have two students from Washington Middle School to lead us in the pledge, one in English and one in Spanish. And Assistant Principal for Washington Middle School will, I'm going to ask, Mifflin? Is that right? I'm going to ask that you introduce your students. Mrs. Anderson will put a flag up on the screen and when they see the flag, they can start the pledge whenever they're ready. And then just if they could hold for a little bit after the pledges, then I think board members would like to thank them and maybe ask a couple of questions.
All right, am I good to go then?
You are.
So we have Victor Garcia-Lazat, that is our ASB president. He's an eighth grader at Washington Middle School, fresh off a football game, ready to join us. And then we have Omar Gomez, one of our sixth grade ASB representatives, who will say the pledge allegiance right after in Spanish. So I'll pass it off to Victor to start us in English.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Victor. That was great. Omar, are you ready?
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Omar. Yo prometo lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república que representa una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
That was wonderful. Thank you, Omar. I appreciate you all taking time out of your schedule. And I'm sure Victor is eager to be done with this tonight so that he can go get dinner or something. But I wanted to offer the opportunity to our board members to thank you in person and maybe they have a couple of questions for you. So Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. So Victor and Omar, thank you for being here today and welcome to our meeting. Appreciate you taking the time to be with us and we appreciate your leadership this evening. Just want to thank you for leading us in the pledge. I do have a question for you guys. What grades are you guys in and what are your plans moving forward from high school?
Well, I'm, do you mean by grades as in what grade you are in or?
Yes, what grade you are currently. And then once you graduate from high school, what are your plans?
Well, I'm in eighth grade and my plans after high school are to go to college. Hopefully, I want to go for law school to be a lawyer. But if that doesn't work, then I have a plan B.
Yeah, I have a feeling that's going to work, work out well for you. So thank you for being here. How about you, Omar?
So I'm in sixth grade and after high school, I want to go to college and then I want to become a doctor.
Nice, thank you. So a doctor and a lawyer, that's awesome. I think we, as me, people get older and our community, I think, are, we're in, will be in good hands in the future. So once again, thank you guys for being here. We appreciate your leadership and we appreciate you taking the time to be with us. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Raymond. Mr. Walker.
Muchas gracias por su ayuda este noche. I wanted to, I just had one question for each of you. Talk a little bit about one thing you like to do outside of school. What's one of your big interests?
One of my biggest interests out of school is sport.
Yeah, I got that with the football part.
Something I enjoy really is riding my bike and skateboarding.
Oh, okay. So you both like to be physically active, huh? Yeah, that's good for health. Well, thanks again for being with us tonight. I wish you well in your school and in your future.
Thank you, Norm. Omar and Victor, thank you so much for joining us this evening. It's always a pleasure to have students join us, if only for a little while. We understand that you may have other things calling for your attention. You're welcome to stay for any part of the meeting that you want to. But if you, if you do have other things asking for your attention, feel free to just log off whenever you want to. We'll completely understand. Again, thank you so much for being here and thank you, Mr. Mifflin, for introducing your students and for allowing us the time to meet with them.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Nice work.
All right, goodbye. I have to go to practice and thank you for having me.
Thank you, Victor. Thank you, Omar.
Goodbye.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the Yakima land acknowledgement and Raymond Navarro will be reading that this evening.
See if I can get my buttons straight. I got a couple of computers I'm operating from. Okay. So it's my honor to read the land acknowledgement. Today, the Yakima, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on ancestral lands of the 14 Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalane, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kidittas, Clickitat, and Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those Native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caregivers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. And acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step forward, or excuse me, toward correcting the stories and the practices that erase Indigenous peoples' history and culture. It also honors the truth. As a school district, we continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. I was remiss in not announcing that Graciela Villanueva and Don Davis regret that they can't be with us this evening. They do have another commitment that they are both attending and so they are excused. I know that they really wish that they could be here for this, for this evening's activities and board business, but something else called for their attention. Next item on our agenda are acknowledgements and of accomplishments and recognitions. We do have several this evening. The first one, I think, Mr. Superintendent, are you announcing the first recognition?
Absolutely, I am. Shall I proceed?
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. It's my honor to acknowledge Kristy Kirk. Are you here? I saw you earlier. I'm sure that you can probably find her on your screen. A recognition, recognition in front of the board is certainly in order. We received a notification from the Washington Association of School Business Officials that she was a recipient of a certification, a prestigious certification, and I will read that to you in part. It says, "On behalf of our officers, directors, and members of the WASBO Certification Governance Board, it is our pleasure to inform you that Kristy Kirk, Fund Accountant, has received the prestigious designation of a certified school business specialist in accounting and accounts payable, CSBS. These certificates were awarded on September 9, 2021." And then at the bottom of the next paragraph, it does state that "it is people such as Kristy that help make your schools and districts stronger. In partnership, WASBO is committed to supporting districts and staff with best practices and continued trainings." And I personally, and I know the board would love to congratulate Kristy. We're proud of you. Thank you for bettering yourself. An example, you are an example that education never ends, learning never ends, and we appreciate the example you're setting for all of us. I don't know if you have any words for us, Kristy?
I just wanted to say thank you to Becky Missin, our finance director, and the school district and WASBO for giving us the opportunity to take those courses and, you know, further our professional growth within the district.
Thank you so much. And I neglected to ask Becky if you would like to say anything?
Absolutely. Congratulations, Kristy. I'm so very proud of you. And I am so excited to watch your growth within the accounting and finance department. So thank you for your hard work. Kristy has given up her own personal time to attend some of this professional development and so she is extremely dedicated to the district and making herself the best that she can be for our department. So thank you, Kristy, and congratulations.
Thanks, Becky.
Congratulations, Kristy. That's, that's quite a recognition. And I'm sure you represented Yakima School District very well as you went through those courses and received that, that professional development level. Is there anything you'd like to say about the coursework that you completed?
I did take two school accounting classes back when I, probably within the first year that I started with the district. And so that's what led to the accounting certification. And then more recently, completed 11 accounts payable modules, badges, is what they call them with WASBO, to get the accounts payable certification. So some, some time and effort put in there to, to make that happen.
Nice. Thank you for your, for your efforts. We always need good accountants and good accounts payable people in, in our business office. So thank you for making sure that, that you've received, you've received that level of professional development. We really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And as I told our students, you're welcome to stay if you want to, but if something else is pulling at you this evening, we completely understand if you have to leave. So thank you so much for being here. Next, we have, I'm sorry?
I just said, "Thank you for having me."
Oh, absolutely. Next, we have a recognition of retirees. These are folks who have retired from the school district since, what?
April to June.
Okay. Since April, folks who have retired from the district since April. And we typically do that this time of year because it doesn't seem right to make them wait until next June, next May, when we do the whole retiree parade that we do at our May business meeting. So we have 29 that we're recognizing this evening and quite a number of them are with us and that's exciting. So as we read through your bio, we'll just make sure to let folks know that you're here, for one. And then for two, if you have a brief something to say, we would encourage you to, to do that, to be very brief because we do have a big, big agenda tonight. But you're welcome to say a few words if you want. I've asked Raymond to kick us off and he'll be reading the first nine names and their bios.
Yes, Martha, thank you. It's an honor for me to recognize our retirees. It goes along with what we just talked about, right? And the, the great award that our staff received earlier today. So we do have quality staff in the district and it's always better sweet, right, to send them off into retirement. But we're going to go ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and do that. So first of all, we do have Carol Armstead. Carol was hired on March 19, 1991 as the Attended Secretary at Lewiston Clark Middle School. Carol spent her entire career with the district in this position. She retired June 17, 2021 with 30 years of service. So congratulations, Carol. Next, we do have Nathan Aon. I hope I pronounced that correctly. And Nathan is with us. No, he's not.
I don't think he made it tonight.
Let me see. Oh, okay. I didn't see.
I haven't seen him on yet.
Okay, so Nathan, okay. So Nathan was hired on April 16, 1991 as a bus driver. He spent his entire career as a bus driver with the district, having driven a wide variety of routes over the years. Nathan retired on August 31, 2021 with over 30 years of service. Thank you, Nathan. Next, we have Gloria Beltran. Gloria was hired on May 30, 1996 as a para educator at Adams Elementary. She spent her entire career as a para educator at Adams, working mostly with bilingual students and programs. Gloria retired on June 10, 2021 with 25 years of service. Congratulations. Roberta Bolstad. Roberta was hired on September 20, 1990 as an occupational therapy assistant. She served in that role until 1995, when she resigned. Roberta returned for the 1999, 2000, and the 2000, 2001 school years to sub as a para educator. She was rehired on January 2, 2001 as a para educator at Gilbert Elementary. She took the position in 2011 as, took a position in 2011 as a special education para educator at Roosevelt Elementary, where she served until her retirement on July 31, 2021. She leaves the district with nearly 25 years of service. Thank you. Let me see, something I note. So Karen is with us today, right? Karen, Capelunga? I'm sorry if I probably didn't pronounce that correctly. Are you here, Karen? Okay, I'm going to give you an opportunity to say a few words after I read our bio, okay? So Karen began her teaching career in Sunnyside in 1977 and Moses Lake in 1978. She joined the Yakima School District as a teacher at Jefferson Elementary from 1983 to 1988. Karen moved to Martin Luther King Elementary as a fourth grade teacher in 1998. In 1993, or excuse me, 1988, in 1993, Karen taught at Wilson, at Washington Middle School. From there, she moved to Hoover Elementary in 1993 as a fifth grade teacher. Karen remained at Hoover until her retirement in 2021. She concluded her teaching career with over 39 years of teaching experience. Thank you so much, Karen. I'll give you an opportunity to make some comments.
Thank you. I just have to say, in all this time, one word to describe my experiences, just joy. I love seeing children's faces. Every time I'm in a grocery store, just anywhere these days, there's a smile on my face under my mask. I remember. Experience was. I have one very brief quote that's had here. Good teachers never teach anything. What they do is create the conditions under which learning succeeds. And I'm very grateful to the Yakima School District for this opportunity.
Raymond, I pushed mute on you. I'm sorry. You'll have to unmute. I apologize for that.
Thank you, Karen. That was, that was an awesome quote. So you, you will be missed by the Yakima School District, but do enjoy retirement. Well, thank you for being with us this evening. Next is Brenda Childers. Brenda was hired October 25, 2001 as a Student Services Secretary. In 2002, she became the Administrative Secretary to the Deputy Superintendent. In 2019, she became the Administrative Assistant in Legal Services. Brenda retired August 31, 2021 with nearly 20 years of experience. Thank you, Brenda. Matthew Christensen. Matthew started his teaching career in the 1984, 1985 school year as an industrial arts teacher at Wilson Middle School. He taught for the Lisle School District from 1985 to 1986 and then moved to the Seala School District from 1988 to 1996. Mr. Christensen joined the Yakima School District in 1996 as the Washington Middle School, at Washington Middle School as a technology teacher. He remained at Washington until his move to Davis High School in 2013, where he became, where he was a CTE Technology, STEM, and Robotics teacher. Mr. Christensen retired with over 34 years of teaching experience. Congratulations, Matthew. Linda Cummings. Linda was hired on November 14, 1991 as a secretary for the Athletics, Activities, and Intermurals Department. In 1996, she became the Office Manager at Davis High School, where she remained until 2000. She then became a secretary for the Teaching and Learning Department and in 2004, moved to the State and Federal Programs Department. Then in 2017, she made her final move and became the Office Manager for ancillary programs where she remained until her retirement. Linda retired on August 31, 2021 with nearly 30 years of service. Thank you, Linda. Patricia DiCio. Patricia was hired on September 21, 1987 as a para educator at Lewiston Clark Middle School. In 1988, she moved from Franklin Middle School, excuse me, moved to Franklin Middle School. She worked as a para educator in a variety of roles at Franklin for the remainder of her career. In addition, Patricia was a coach in a variety of sports for several years. Prior to 1987, she worked briefly in the district as an aide from 1997 to 1981. She retired on July 30, 2021 with nearly 34 years of service. Thank you. I think I turn it over to the next person, right?
Norm is going to read the next nine names for us.
Okay, well, next up, we have Donna Devois. Donna was hired on October 19, 1998 as an assistant cook at Robertson Elementary. After moving to McKinley Elementary in 1999, she moved to McClure Elementary in 2000 as a cook. She remained there until 2013, when she moved to Adams Elementary. Then in 2018, she moved one last time to Robertson Elementary, where she remained until her retirement. Donna retired on April 2, 2021 with over 22 years of service. Thank you, Donna. Denise Fant. Denise was hired on August 17, 2009 as the Library Secretary at Washington Middle School. Denise remained in this position for her remaining time with the district. She also worked in the district from 1974 to 1984 in various office positions. Denise retired on July 30, 2021 with 12 years of service. Thanks to Denise. Colleen Foreman, and I believe Colleen is with us tonight. Colleen was hired on August 23, 2013 as a special education para educator at Eisenhower High School. In 2015, she moved into a special education para educator position at Wilson Middle School, where she also served as assistant track coach. Colleen retired on June 10, 2021 with nearly eight years of service. Thank you, Colleen. And would you like to add anything?
Yeah, thank you. I enjoyed my time at both Eisenhower and Wilson. And hopefully, in the near future, we are going to be doing some traveling. I unexpectedly had a hip replacement on August 30, which I didn't know I needed to have, so I'm slowly recovering from that. I'm seven weeks post-op, so I'm down to using the cane now. So I'm making progress, one step at a time. Thank you.
Well, we wish you well.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Pam Herbst, and Pam is also with us this evening. Pam was hired September 3, 1991 as a special education para educator at Franklin Middle School. She spent her entire career with the district in this position. Pam retired June 10, 2021 with 30 years of service. Thank you, Pam. And would you like to add anything?
Sure. I enjoyed my time at Franklin all 30 years. I wasn't in the special ed department after nine years. I was also in the title program, ran the in-house supervised suspension room, and then worked with instructional facilitator, as many of the things I did. It felt really weird when school started this year and I wasn't going there. I'm used to it now, but boy, it felt weird.
Yeah, it's 30 years in one building is quite extensive service, yeah. Well, thanks again for all your work.
You're very welcome.
Next up, we have Cynthia Hunter, known to most of us as Cindy Hunter. Cindy launched her teaching career in 1980 with the Othello School District. The following year, she joined the Yakima School District as an English teacher at Lewiston Clark Middle School. She remained at Lewiston Clark until 1985. Cynthia then transferred to Davis High School in 1985 to teach high school English. She remained at Davis until her retirement. During her time at Davis, she was also the yearbook advisor for many years, as well as being involved with drill team and coaching various sports. Cindy retired with over 40 years as an educator. And I'd like to add, I spent 10 years of my career at Davis while Cindy was there. And I can assure you from lots of observation that she deeply loved her students and they loved her back. Cindy, would you like to add anything?
Thank you. I just really felt was Yakima School District was always very good to me. So I really appreciate the district and it was always, I was an honor to teach at Davis. So it was, I just really appreciated my time with the district. Thank you.
Well, we appreciated you. Next up, we have Trudy Jarvis. Trudy was hired on November 26, 2012 as a para educator at Ridgeview Elementary. In 2014, while remaining at Ridgeview, Trudy changed jobs to become a data specialist. She remained in this position for the rest of her career. In addition, Trudy worked as a para educator in the district from 1987 to 1999. Trudy retired on June 30, 2021 with nearly nine years of service. Thank you to Trudy. And next up is Anita Kissel. Anita was hired on June 17, 2013 as a secretary in the Maintenance and Operations Department. Anita remained in this position for her entire career with the district, focused mostly in supporting the maintenance division. Anita will retire on August 31, 2021 with over eight years of service. Thanks, Anita. Next, we have Valerie Klingelsmith. Valerie was hired on November 11, 2014 as the Payroll Benefits and Employee Safety Programs Manager. Valerie remained in this position for her entire career with the district. Valerie retired on August 31, 2021 with nearly seven years of service. And finally, for my section, we have Barbara Loudon. And I And finally, for my section, we have Barbara Loudon, and I believe she's with us tonight. Barbara was hired on October twenty fourth, two thousand thirteen, as a paraeducator at Gilbert Elementary. She spent her entire career as a paraeducator at Gilbert, working mostly in Special Education and with the LAP program. Barbara retired on August thirty first, two thousand twenty one, with nearly eight years of service. Thanks again, Barbara. And would you like to add anything?
I don't think she was able to make it in after all.
Oh, okay. I think it's back to, um, to you, Martha.
Yes, thank you, Norm. Um, next on the list is Crystal Mary, and I think Crystal is with us this evening. Crystal Mary started her first teaching assignment with the Tapanish School District from nineteen eighty three to nineteen eighty four. She joined the Akama School District the following year as a physical education teacher at Washington Middle School. During her years at Washington, she taught physical education, math, and science. In two thousand thirteen, she moved to Wilson Middle School to teach math. She remained at Wilson until her retirement. Crystal retired with over thirty seven years of teaching experience. Thank you, Crystal. And would you like to add anything?
Yes, I'd just like to say I've thoroughly enjoyed working for the Akama School District and serving our students, as well as our parents and our families, and, uh, uh, very rewarding experiences with coaching various sports throughout the years, forty, over forty years of coaching also. And so, um, again, I wish to thank, thank, um, the wonderful relationships that I've made with staff members also, and, uh, just thoroughly have enjoyed the time that, um, I, I was in Yakima School District. Thank you again.
Thank you, Crystal, and thank you for your service. Next is Leonore Negri. Leonore was hired on April first, nineteen eighty two, as the Secretary for the Bilingual Department at the Administration Building. In nineteen eighty three, Leonore became the Secretary for what was then called Learning Resources. While the name later changed to Library Support, Leonore remained in that position for the remainder of her career. Leonore retired on July seventh, two thousand twenty one, with over thirty nine years of service. Thank you, Leonore. Next is Mary Nelson. Mary was hired on September eighth, nineteen ninety two, as a paraeducator at Wilson Middle School. Mary remained in this position until two thousand and four, when she accepted the position of Materials Coordinator for Math and Science at the Resource Center. Mary retired on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty one, with over twenty six years of experience. Thank you, Mary. Dora O'Brien. Dora O'Brien began her career in education as a paraeducator for the Akama School District from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety six. In nineteen ninety six, she became a teacher at Hoover Elementary. The following year, she moved to McClure to teach second grade. Dora then taught for the Wapato School District for three years before returning to McClure in two thousand and one. She remained at McClure as a second-grade teacher until her retirement in two thousand and twenty one. Dora retired with over twenty four years as a teacher. Next is Susan Parker. Susan was hired February first, two thousand six, as a Library Specialist at Davis High School. She spent her entire career with the district in this position. Susan retired August tenth, two thousand twenty one, with over fifteen years of service. Thank you, Dora, and thank you, Susan, for your service. Doug Poole. Doug was hired December eighteen, nineteen eighty nine, as a grounds maintenance helper at the Administration Building. In nineteen ninety three, he moved to an Operations Two-day custodian position at Davis High School. He moved back to the Administration Building in nineteen ninety seven as a Maintenance One Assistant. In two thousand and one, he moved to an Operations One position, split between Barge Lincoln Elementary and Garfield Elementary. In two thousand two, his position was full-time at Barge Lincoln. In two thousand and six, Doug moved to Martin Luther King Elementary until two thousand and eighteen, when he moved to Robertson. Doug retired June thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, with over thirty one years of service. Thank you, Doug. Loretta Strassel. Loretta began her career as a substitute teacher for the West Valley School District in nineteen, from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety one. She joined the Akama School District in nineteen ninety one as a reading teacher at Garfield Elementary. Loretta spent the rest of her teaching career at Garfield Elementary as a reading teacher, reading specialist, and reading interventionist. She also spent time at the, as the migrant bilingual coordinator at Garfield. Loretta retired with over thirty years of experience as a teacher. Thank you, Loretta. Jean Tullock. Jean began her career teaching for the Washoe County School District in Nevada from two thousand to two thousand and fourteen. She spent a short stint substitute teaching for the Akama School District in two thousand fourteen before signing a contract to teach kindergarten at Adams Elementary School. She became Adams Reading Interventionist her second year and remained in that position until her retirement in two thousand twenty one. Jean retires with over twenty years of teaching experience. Yvonne Ulis, and Yvonne is here with us this evening. Yvonne began her teaching career as a first-grade teacher at St. Joseph Marquette Catholic School from nineteen eighty one to nineteen eighty six. She continued as a first-grade teacher for the Natche School District from nineteen eighty six to two thousand and two. Yvonne joined the Akama School District in two thousand and two as a second-grade teacher at Robertson El-, at Roosevelt Elementary. She remained at Roosevelt as a second-grade teacher until her retirement in two thousand and twenty one. Yvonne retired with forty years of teaching experience. Thank you, Yvonne. Do you have anything else you'd like to share?
Um, yeah, you know, I began my career with the Akama District in nineteen seventy five, the seventy-nine, as a paraeducator with a program then called Follow Through, and it, um, taught children and parents together. And it was those five years that made me realize I really wanted to teach, and I had my own class, went back to school, came back. So I began with the Akama District, and I came back to end my career with what I think is the best district in the state. So I cannot give enough kudos to the entire staffs in every building in Yakama District. I have never known in my career harder-working individuals than in the Akama School District, and it's been a privilege and an honor to begin my career and end my career with the best. Thank you.
I've known Yvonne for a very long time, and I can remember when you went back to school for your teaching certificate. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for your years of service to the district. And last, we have, last but not least, we have Loretta Watson, and I think Loretta is here this evening. Loretta Watson began teaching in Kennewick from nineteen eighty three to nineteen eighty six. She substituted for the Akama School District from nineteen eighty six to nineteen eighty seven. Loretta took a position at Barge Lincoln Elementary beginning in nineteen eighty seven and stayed there until two thousand and one. During her time at Barge Lincoln, Loretta taught third, fourth, and fifth grades. In two thousand and one, she moved to Nob Hill Elementary to teach first grade. She stayed in this teaching assignment until her retirement in two thousand and twenty one. Loretta retired with over thirty eight years of teaching experience. Thank you, Loretta. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I do. Actually, it wasn't in Kennewick. I started out St. Joseph's in Yakama Private School, one year third and three years of fifth grade, before moving into the Akama School District. And it has been an honor to be part of the team of, of, um, staff members, educators, paras, the whole gamut of all the ones that put together the Akama School District. Um, it has been an amazing run with this, and I think that, um, the lives that we have touched as educators in any capacity uh, makes that difference for these young ones that grow into adults. And I always tell my students, um, it doesn't matter if you remember my name, just remember someone cared about you. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. I apologize that we had that wrong.
It's okay.
You're retired. You don't care anymore, right? Well, as one who is retired as well, um, I know that it takes a little bit of getting used to, but I highly recommend it, and I'm glad that you all have been able to join the ranks of retirees. Um, I don't know if you all, um, paid too much attention to the number of years of service that these folks, um, put in to their careers, both in Yakama School District and in other places. But I added it up, and these twenty nine people have a total years of service of seven hundred and thirty-six years. That's an awful lot of years of service, and that's a tremendous number, thousands and thousands of students that, that you touch throughout that, those years of service, all the way from early childhood, first grade, all the way up through high school. And I know that you all made a difference for every single child that you had in, in your sphere of influence within the district. So thank you all very much for joining us this evening. Thank you for your, your years of service and your dedication to the students of the Akama School District. And I wish you well in your retirement. May you get to do the things that you've longed to do for many years and, um, enjoy this, enjoy this time, because just like when you have children, time flies pretty fast. Um, one of the best pieces of advice I got when I was getting ready to retire was to throw my alarm clock away. I ended up digging it back out again at some point, but there were, there were a number of months when the alarm clock did not ring for me at four AM, so that, so that I could get up and go to work. So I, I encourage you to pursue your hobbies, do the things you love to do with the people that you love to do them with, and enjoy this time of your life. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We really appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you. And as I told the others, you're welcome to stay if you want, but if you have other things that are pulling at you this evening, we completely understand. Um, feel free to leave whenever, um, whenever you need to. So thank you so much. Um, that was a lot of fun. I enjoy doing those. Uh, next, we have, um, Principal of the Month proclamation. October is, um, National Principals Month, and I've asked Raymond Navarro to read the proclamation for us.
Yes, thank you. It's my, um, honor to recognize that the principals, um, especially the principals of the Akama School District. As we know, the pandemic really threw a lot of challenges to all of us, but in particular to our principals. And it changed their role, right? It became more complex, you know, instead of just having schools be safe, they had to look at how to make them safe from COVID as well, right? How to maintain relationships with teachers and the staff, uh, via online instruction, and how to maintain quality of instruction, even though it was online. So really, our hats off to principals, specifically those in the Akama School District. We know that their job became more complex and more difficult, but even more important. So with that, I'd just like to read the proclamation. Whereas the Washington Senate has declared that the month of October two thousand and twenty one as National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of National Association of Elementary School Principals and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with the US Congress to designate National Principals Month and resolutions thereof. And whereas principals and assistant principals play significant roles in our education system by creating hope for each and every student in their buildings by leading culture, systems, and learning, and working tirelessly each day as visionaries, assessment experts, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives. And whereas principals and assistant principals work collaboratively with families, teachers, and district officials to maintain or to develop mission statements, set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence, and maintain high curriculum standards and expectations for all students. And whereas the Association of Washington School Principals honors exemplary principals and assistant principals, we have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as their exemplary contributions to the profession. And whereas to honor and recognize the contribution of all principals and assistant principals to the success of each and every student in Washington schools are most valuable resource, and to encourage residents of Washington to deserve, to observe Principals Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of the importance of school leadership and ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. Now, therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twenty one as Principals Month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Governor J. Inslee, thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. We have another proclamation this evening, and that is for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I've asked Norm Walker to read that proclamation for us.
Okay. Indigenous Peoples' Day, October twenty twenty one. A resolution of the Board of Directors of Yakama School District Number Seven, reaffirming the board's commitment to promote the well-being and growth of every district student, especially of Yakama's American Indian and Indigenous students. Whereas, the board recognizes that the Indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial. And whereas, the board recognizes the fact that Yakama is built upon the homelands and villages of the Indigenous peoples of this region, without whom the building of the city would not have been possible. And whereas, the board values the many contributions made to our community through Indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that has substantially shaped our district. And whereas, the board has established that each and every student is to be celebrated and appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures, languages, ideas, beliefs, and values within a school community. And whereas, the board has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism toward Indigenous people in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas, the board seeks to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination stemming from colonization, and to promote awareness, understanding, and good relations among Indigenous peoples and all other segments of our district. And whereas, the board promotes closing the equity gap And whereas, the board promotes closing the equity gap for Indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of Indigenous peoples, ensure greater access and opportunity and honor our nation's indigenous roots, history and contributions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Yakima School District proclaim every second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. The district shall encourage staff to utilize the second Monday in October to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of the Indigenous people of this land and are encouraged to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the Indigenous people in our region and to stand in solidarity with Indigenous peoples elsewhere. Appropriate district calendars and website shall reference the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you, Norm. Next on our agenda, we have reports. So first is reports from members of the board. Do any board members have anything they'd like to share with the rest of us?
Not at this time.
Raymond? Okay, I did want to let the public know that I'll be attending and I don't know, Norm, are you attending General Assembly as well?
Yes, I will be attending General Assembly.
Okay. The Washington State School Directors Association is holding their General Assembly on the 29th and 30th. It is virtual again this year. And so Norm and I will be spending the better part of two days sitting somewhere, watching watching computer screens as school directors across the state debate, discuss various proposals that have been brought forward through our process for consideration to be placed somewhere in the legislative platform for the Washington State School Directors Association. The first week of November, so immediately following General Assembly, we'll be going through a prioritization process where we submit our top 15 proposals to the association. And then on the 12th and 13th, I will be joining the Washington State School Directors Association Legislative Committee as we review the results of that prioritization process, which will include every school district within the state. So it's it's a bit of a process, but I think the product that we come out with at the end is a good product that's reflective of the needs of school districts and students across our state. So we'll be reporting back probably on the November meeting about the results from General Assembly as well as the the prioritization process. Is there anything to add, Norm?
Well, just that as a member of the Resolutions Committee, they have asked that that I help present on the on some of the things that have come out of Resolutions Committee, so we'll need to talk about transferring credentials back and forth.
Okay.
I would I would be just comfortable having you do all the presenting, but but actually that might give you a little bit of a break, but there's a process we have to do to transfer credentials so that I could speak to some of those things that came out of Resolutions.
Right. Hopefully the connections will be better this year than they were last.
Yeah.
Okay.
Martha, if you're done, I do have something.
Sure, go ahead.
So I did notice that registration for NSBA Conference next year is now open. So that's something that the board, I think, might want to consider if we're planning to send any any board members to that event. It's going to be in person. So that's what the plan is. So so I just wanted to bring that to the to the board's attention.
Do you remember where it is, Raymond?
It's San Diego.
Oh. I've been to one of those in San Diego. It's a nice venue.
It is. So but it registration is now open and you save, I forget how much money by going with early registration.
Okay.
All right.
We can talk about that at our next Monday board meeting, if that would be okay. Barb, could you add that to the agenda, please?
Yep, I sure will.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. All right. Next, we have the superintendent's update. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rice, members of the board. I call attention to October's Character Word of the Month, determined, defined as having reached a decision firmly resolved and carrying the trait of resilient learner. In Spanish, decidido haber tomado una decisión firmemente resuelto y la característica es aprendiz resiliente. Moving into our next item, we will have the COVID report with YSD statistics, followed by the county statistics. I will turn time over to Assistant Superintendent of Operations Stacy Locke.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. So this evening's statistics looked better than they did last week and we are have 24% less student positive cases and 17% less students in quarantine. But our staff members are up a little bit. The preponderance of quarantine definitely is elementary students with over 53%. And again, this last week at our static site outside Central Services, we administered 1,200, over 1,200 tests that came back approximately a 4% positivity rate. So we are trending down. We are seeing things improve. On November 1st, set up by our migrant program, we're going to have a immunization clinic down outside Student Family Services from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It is open to the public, but they will have COVID vaccines, they will have flu shots as well as immunization shots that students need to be to receive in order to be able to attend school. So things are moving in the right direction and we will be, as of November 1st, allowing visitors and volunteers back into our school buildings and facilities. If they are there for a short period of time or if they have an extended stay, that they do have a proof of vaccination to be in our school setting. So that would include when we look at our ESD advocates, when we look at field supervisors for programs for student teaching and practicums, our vendors, situations like that, as well as parents. So that's the next slide, Barb, please.
Excuse me, Stacy, a quick question. Does that include like sports clubs and teams from outside the district? I know they use facilities in the past, so.
Yeah, not yet. What we're we're looking for a goal of 300 cases per 100,000 in a 14-day window before we actually open to outside groups and that will be in line with the Yakima Health District. And right now, in fact, I think Jewel will be sharing here in a few minutes, we're about 527 per 100,000. And so although those rates have steadily gone down each week, we need them a little lower in order to open our buildings up to outside uses and group uses in order to to maintain the level of safety that we have had in our school district buildings.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide, please. And again, our contact tracing is is working well and between 10:10 Sunday of last week through Saturday, they contacted over 343 people concerning COVID. Next slide, please. And that's it. Are there any other questions?
Any questions from board members?
Okay.
Thank you, Stacy. It's nice to see the numbers going down a little bit.
Yes, it is indeed. Superintendent Green.
Yeah, President Rice, as I turn this over to now Jewel Brumley, I would just actually call attention to the board that Jewel was recognized with our administrative team with the Stick Your Neck Out Award. So that was an acknowledgement for going above and beyond the regular duties of her position and putting her leadership on display in a manner that is a little bit uncomfortable for the position that she holds. And Jewel is somebody that does not like to be cast into the limelight. So we're greatly appreciative of her service over well over the last year, serving in an assistant principal role and then spending the evenings with us multiple times throughout the month. So congratulations, Jewel, on that recognition. And we look forward to the report currently about the Yakima County Statistics.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. And I really appreciate the recognition. It's all just happy to be part of the team and contributing. So our daily cases are going down. It's been mostly the last two weeks, we've only had, you know, one or two days over into triple digits. Most of the time we're in double digits for daily cases. We had 61 today, so that's good. Our our rate, as Stacy Locke said, is 527 per 100,000 for the last 14 days, which again is a decline. We did have a little bit of an up rate for the last seven days. I'm hoping that's just the last part of the fair bump we might have had or it could be a little bit of the cooler weather that we're just now experiencing. This new slide, vaccinations rates versus unvaccinated cases. So in blue are the vaccinated breakthrough cases and in yellow is the unvaccinated cases in the county, both in September and October. So you can see a big disparity between vaccinated and unvaccinated. Our zip code rates again are continuing to decline all across all the zip codes, so that's good. Hospitalizations went down and were hovering around 30, bumped up a little bit at the beginning of last week and are coming down again. So that's a good, a good trend. This is hospitalizations by vaccinated versus unvaccinated people. So again, vaccinated is in blue, people that were hospitalized in September and October and unvaccinated people that were hospitalized in September and in October, even though October is not done yet. So that'll go up again next week. Our age rate, remember, 0 to 18, those students are transferred or students, those children are transferred to Children's Hospital in Seattle or Spokane or Tacoma where there are beds available. So our vaccination rates by age, again, the biggest amount is that 49 to 64-year-old rate of hospitalizations. School age cases as of last week, we had 93 new students in the county positive with COVID and 25 staff. And over time, the positive cases in K-5, 6, 8 and 9, 12 are declining this week, which is good. This is the overall percentage of initiating the vaccine. So this counts all the total population of 256,000 people in Yakima County and we're at about 55% that initiated the vaccine. This is the people that are 12 and up and 12 and up, we're at 69.2% that have initiated the vaccine. That's a good trend. And fully vaccinated, this is all people in Yakima County. So that includes the ones that aren't old enough to be vaccinated, but we're still under 50%. We're at 40, 48.8% fully vaccinated for our population. And 12 and up, we're a higher percentage of 61% of our population, 12 and up. The forecast, I have us trending down slightly till the end of the month. We did have a little bit of a bump this week. You can see where the orange line goes up, kind of in between my two data points there. So hopefully we continue our trend down till the end of the month. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Jewel?
I always have a question or two. I do, does your data show, I know they show it sometimes on the local news, but does your data show the number of deaths we've had in this county since the beginning of COVID?
I don't have the total number of deaths from the very beginning of March of 2020.
Okay.
In October, and we're not through the end of the month, we've had 31 deaths.
In that month?
In Yakima County.
In the month?
In this month, yes.
Just in the month.
Just in this month.
We don't know the total.
No, last last month, we had 71 deaths, which is our high for the for any single month during the pandemic.
Okay. Well, I I wanted to bring that up as just kind of an editorial comment because there's a there's a state in Australia that has about population of 250,000, the Northern Territories in Australia, and our county's population is 250,000. And since the beginning of COVID in Northern Territories, there have been a grand total of seven deaths. And that is because there is mandatory vaccination and masking. And so those that want to argue against vaccination and masking, I just encourage you to look at the data. And I don't, we're probably well into the hundreds, if five or 600, I think, in this county.
Actually, I do remember we're at 555.
Yeah, something like, yeah.
555. We added two in the last 24 hours today.
So that's an area of the same population, seven total deaths. So I just, I would encourage people to rethink about the thinking about resisting vaccination and be a strong advocate for vaccination. It works. And then you compare that to the state of Texas, which has gone the total opposite direction. And so far, the state of Texas, which has 29 million people, have over 70,000 deaths, which is about the population of Yakima. So again, I would encourage people to just take a look at that and think about that. Thank you. That's my editorial comment for the night.
Thanks, Norm. Any other questions for Jewel?
All right. And there we have actually the acknowledgement for Jewel Brumley. We thought it would be nice to share with the board.
Congratulations, Jewel. Well deserved.
Thank you. I was really shocked, so, but thank you.
And thank you, Barb, for sharing that. The the board is well aware of the work that took place in assembling, compiling, creating the strategic plan. Goal number two was around empowered, connected, supported and engaged. And the 2026 community commitment was that at least 19 of every 20 students will attend school at least 171 days out of 180 school days per year. A month or so back, maybe a couple of months back, Shelby Lockhart came in and shared a preliminary template of what would be then shared every so often here with the board. And I have invited Shelby back and thanked her for making time to give us an update on the attendance report. Shelby?
Thank you, Dr. Green. I'll share my screen here. Nope, you've got it, Barb. Great. Okay. Okay, go ahead and go for the, so what I did, I'll just start by thanking Martha for meeting with me for a few minutes the other day to just clarify what might be helpful for. to just clarify what might be helpful for attendance data, knowing that this year's gone a little different than we thought. And that original template was very optimistic and hopeful. And then we had to readjust and talk about what information would be helpful to know, so thank you for that input. So I hope that you'll let me know at the end of this if other information will be helpful. But what I did was I took the numbers that I currently have, they're not complete. I will say that as we are still cleaning some of our quarantine student data and our student information system. But this is what we have as of a couple of days ago for the count for quarantine students. And what I want you to know is for any of the following slides after this, they do not include these students. So I've pulled the quarantine student counts out of any other attendance data. So we can see the slides as we originally hoped to see them without that quarantine count that is a little bit out of our control around attendance. So this here just tells us that there's kind of a range of days. So that first bar, there's a range of zero to five days absent. So we would have a thousand four hundred and seventy-two students who have experienced zero to five days worth of absences due to quarantine. So that just gives you a sense of some of the data that's coming in. I believe by our next report, we'll have some pretty clean and finalized data. Because we have a good system now for accessing that data, so. Next slide, this is the number of students versus the days absent. Remember this does not include quarantine students. So over to the right, you'll see that there are eighty-three students who have been absent thirty-one to thirty-five days. So those are our students who we've just had very minimal contact with or no contact with. And, or I shouldn't say contact, but they have not made it into school. And then all the way to the left, you'll see that although we do not want to promote perfect attendance, we do have three thousand six hundred and ninety-five students who have come every day of school so far. So you see the whole range there of absences. Next slide, and then like we've shown in previous reports, here are our elementary schools on a range of a hundred percent, knowing that each school has a lot different student count, full student count. So those are secondary, remember there are no quarantine student counts in this data. And next slide, and this is by race. And this looks a little bit different, we do percentages to maintain confidentiality. And by gender. This one I thought was interesting, they're not too far off from each other. Again quarantine students out, and then finally by characteristic and program. And this is where we're just doing some next steps work with some program directors and staff to look at how we can further support students and remove barriers in these areas. So happy to speak about that further in other conversations, but I want to make sure I don't take up too much time. I, I will end with, I think that's the last slide, right Barb? Yeah, I, I will end with just an awareness of the next steps as always. And I mentioned this last time, but it's always around three areas that we look for improving attendance. And that is making sure we have the best possible data available to our staff so that they can make the best decisions that they can around removing barriers. And then also making sure we have really strong leadership around the data so that we're responding to students' needs and removing barriers as quickly as possible. And then finally, just really building our effective and positive communication systems. So a lot of work being done in all three of those areas to improve, improve attendance. And that's it, any questions?
Thank you Shelby, any questions for Shelby tonight? Thank you, complete report Shelby, thank you so much for taking our suggestions.
Yeah, you bet.
This is really helpful information for us, especially as we try to work toward that strategic plan goal. We still have a long ways to go.
Me too. I asked in our OSPI attendance network if we could just hit a reset button in November and let everybody just try again for that original goal, so thank you everyone for your time.
Thanks Shelby.
Thank you Shelby, yes, and proceeding with the superintendent update, the board is reminded that this last week, I did send out personal, personal notification to each board member about ECF funding, which was a, an award that was secured for technology in our district to provide a little bit more of an explanation and to share this with the general public, specifically those observing tonight and that would access this at a later date. We have another special guest in Andy Gonzalez, who will give us more of the details around the ECF funding commitments. Andy?
He is working his way on.
Okay.
He has a lot of behind the scenes during these meetings. There he is.
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Green. So the Emergency Connectivity Fund is a fund that was created to help close the gap and close some of the issue and help schools go through some of the issues that they were experiencing before the pandemic, but that were really brought to light during the pandemic. The Connectivity Fund allows for the reimbursement of internet access for our students in the home, but also device connectivity. We put in an application because we want to make sure that our students have a, the best chance possible in their educational career. And so we put in an application to replace the computers that will be coming end of life. And we were awarded a million dollars towards that effort. So two thousand five hundred computers will be ordered, of which we will be paying only the two hundred thousand plus amount. And so very happy that we applied for those funds and that we were, our application was accepted and approved.
Any questions for Andy? Andy, this would go toward replacement laptops, correct? Because all of our students currently have some kind of technology, district provided technology, is that correct?
Correct. All of our students have a laptop, so we're not backfilling any devices that we don't have. What we're actually doing is just making sure that we stay current and that our students have the opportunity to participate equitably in curriculum access and in their education.
Thank you.
Andy, the, the district, the community, our students, we owe you so much in the work that you do to make accessibility a reality in our district. And I can definitively share with the board and our community tonight that we would not have secured this funding and much funding that we've received throughout the years to bolster up our technology and our connectivity were not for you. So thank you so much for all that you continue to do on behalf of the Yakima community.
Thank you, I humbly serve our students in hopes to better their future.
Thank you Andy.
Wonderful, and the last item that I would share in the superintendent's update this evening is a study and survey notification that must be presented to you as board members and for an explanation. And share of this document, I employ Dr. Darling to please take over.
Thank you Superintendent Green and good evening, board members. So as I stated at the top of this, the district is in, is in the beginning stages of creating a long, a long-range facilities plan for our schools. And the first step in doing that is having a studies and survey done in all our buildings and which is done by an architect, architectural firm and, and mechanical engineers. And they go through and determine the structural mechanical status of each school. For us to, we, we can receive funds from OSPI to reimburse this study as long as we submit a grant, a grant application. Part of the grant application process was that I provide you with the whack regarding the study and survey. And so the day that I uploaded the study and survey document to Board Docs, I also submitted the grant. And OSPI's turnaround was very quick, so today they actually approved the grant already to, to pay for the study and survey. And so, so the other document that you see on Board Docs, the D two document, that is actually the award that will cover our study and survey grants. And so this is the first step in us going forth with the study and survey. The last, we did one in two thousand nine, which, but it was kind of a mini version and it only covered Davis and Eisenhower. But the last comprehensive study we've done was in two thousand and three, so we are definitely due. But we're excited to embark on this process and begin work on creating a fifteen to twenty-year long-range facilities plan for the Yakima School District.
Thank you, Dr. Darling, are there any questions from board members?
Yes, I have one, so my understanding that we had one in place, is that, are we updating that plan or are we? Or we don't have a plan in place, I just, I'm just wondering about that, because I know we've, we've had a long-range facilities plan in place already, so.
I, I was not able to find a current long-range facilities plan and part of the problem is they are usually aligned with the study and survey that, that the district does. And there's, the districts are supposed to do one every six years, so the long-range plans can be updated. And the last one the district did was two thousand and three. So we're a little bit out of sync.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Rob? I'm looking forward Rob to the work of that, those long-range groups and seeing what they come up with. This is something, this is something that's long overdue for our district.
I agree, and it'll be exciting benefits for our students.
Absolutely.
Martha, and I think, I just kind of like thinking of the steps beyond, right, that the board would probably need to consider. I know we do have a number of schools that just really need to be replaced. They're just not fitting the needs of our students and so I think, I'm, I'm happy that we're, the district is conducting this study so we can really nail down what the facility needs for, for our district. So thank you, Ms. Superintendent and Dr. Darling for, for this work.
Thank you, Dr. Darling, for your initiative and securing that opportunity as well, moving forward. Any funding through OSPI and the state is always welcome, especially when we do not have to reimburse that and it helps benefit our planning process. I will now conclude my superintendent update and would remind everyone, thank you Patty for the interpretation, that we must speak a little slower, so I'm trying to model that as I know I am a primary offender. So I'll pass it back to you, President Rice.
Thank you Trevor, we are determined to make sure that our translator doesn't overextend. Next on the agenda is the monthly financial update with Becky Neeson, Becky.
Thank you President Rice and good evening board. I am pleased to bring you our look, a glimpse into what happened with September. So I do want to remind everyone that we are currently in the process of closing the twenty twenty twenty-one school year and creating our financials. So I hope to bring that to you next month so that you have the whole picture of where we ended up. But I wanted to also bring forward September, the board is patient in waiting for this information. And typically in the past, we haven't brought it forward. So I'm happy and was determined to bring this to you so that you can see September. All right, so a couple of items for September interest and I will give you details on this enrollment when we get to that slide. But currently our enrollment did decline twenty-seven FTE compared to the average annual FTE for twenty twenty-one. So this is just the first month of enrollment. We're also sixty-three below the twenty-one, twenty-two budgeted FTE. So when we get to those slides, I will make sure I point that out to you so that you see the numbers that I'm monitoring. We've already celebrated Andy and his success, I also have that in my report to acknowledge his great work in bringing funding forward to the district. And so I'm recognizing the million dollars award from the ECF. And then also just letting you know that the buildings and the district continue to work together to spend the S or two funds towards learning recovery. So that is, we have a process down and we are following that process and it is going very well. So this slide is the five-year enrollment and you can see in that first column there where we have the September enrollment, and this is the K twelve and the ALE enrollment. And it is at fifteen four four nine. Now if you compare that to June of twenty twenty-one, you'll see that it was at fifteen two seventy-eight, just in that month of June. So we did increase, we did see students coming back in September, which was great. The last column is that AA FTE or the average annual that I referred to. So if you'll look at that for twenty twenty-one, it was fifteen four seventy-six. And I compare that against September at fifteen four four nine, and that's where you see the decline. The next slide. This slide should look a little different to you, this is the budgeted enrollment line. The black line is, the solid black line is the budgeted enrollment. And I want to explain to you the September versus the October jump there. So total budgeted enrollment includes running start. We do not begin counting running start students until October. So I did a slight adjustment between September and October to reflect that so that you have the total picture that we're looking at. And there is a hundred and sixty running start students budgeted in our twenty-one, twenty-two enrollment. And that's the difference there in the fifteen five fifty-one versus the fifteen seven eleven for the remainder of the year. So fifteen seven eleven was our budgeted FTE and adjusted in September by the hundred and sixty. You have questions about that slide, that is, looks a little different from last time, so just want to make sure everybody understands.
Becky, these would be juniors and seniors or just seniors?
Running start would include, I believe juniors and seniors.
Yes, that's correct, juniors and seniors.
Thank you, Dr. Darling.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is the slide for the revenue budget versus actual comparison. In that first column there, you'll see September, so September of twenty twenty-one, the black bar or the middle bar is the budget and then twenty-one, twenty-two actual is the blue bar there. We're a little bit ahead of last, of last year and a little bit under our budget. Nothing, nothing to be too concerned with. This is the cash flow. Because there's only one month to report, it shows up as a little dot, I hope you can see that. Little blue dot underneath the black line. So, the budgeted cash flow or the projected cash flow has us at 24.4 million. We're actually sitting at 20.3 million. This is, I think, reflective of the S or spending. So, nothing to be too concerned about as we get underway. This is the first month of our 21-22 year. And we're, we'll watch this very closely to make sure that, because remember that we have to spend the S or, we have to expend S or dollars and then be reimbursed. Next slide. So, the total expenditures, budget versus actual again, that, in that first column, you'll see the September actuals for 2020. The budget is in the middle, and, and then the actual for 21-22. So, we are slightly above where we were in the previous year. Again, I expect this to continue to increase due to the S or spending that we are doing. That is budgeted, so I expect the expenditures to follow the budget lines as we move throughout the year. This is the payroll trend. This is 18, or 19, 20, 2021, the budget year of 21-22, and then the actuals. In that first column there, you'll see we are slightly above budget for payroll, but it is, again, to be expected with the S or spending. And the next slide is the MSOCs, or the material supplies and other costs of the school district. So, anything other than salaries and benefits. And you'll see that we are definitely on a trend. 9.7 million was spent in the month of September. This doesn't include any accruals for the previous year. So, September is, was our highest month for spending on, for MSOCs. Any questions? Then, all right, we will move to the last slide, which is the S or 2 spending. And here is our S or slide with the 10 points. The first column again is the allocations based on each of the 10 items. And then the second column is this expense so far to date, as of 9/30/21. So, we are at 4.9 million. We have incurred 6.7 million. And so, we are 10.9 million dollars in our balance. What questions can I answer for you?
Any questions for Becky tonight?
I just have one. Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Just one with the S or funds. How long do we have to expend those? Is there a limit on, you know, we have to spend that out at a certain time? I forget when that is.
Yes, thank you, Norm. The spend for S or 2 is September of 2023.
Okay.
And the S or 3 ARP funds is September 2024.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, my question was, it's, well, not a question, but can you remind me if the S or funds were included in our approved budget? Or is that in addition to the approved budget? I forget.
They are in there, Raymond, yes. So, yep, we have, you know, I can get you the exact numbers for next board meeting.
Oh, no, no, that, that's fine. I just, I just couldn't recall if we included the S or funds in, in our original approved budget, so.
We did. We included both S or 2 and a slight spend into the S or 3 for the 21-22 budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Becky? Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the inclusion of the S or spending in your reports to us. I think it's important that not only the board stay informed of this, but that the community be aware of it as well, which they will be through the recording of this, the recording and live streaming of our board meetings. So, thank you so much. Okay, let's look and see what we've got next here. Next is the first opportunity for public comment from the public. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on any agenda items. Because we've gone virtual, we have updated our public comment process in that the public is required now to fill out a form and notify us by 3 o'clock in the afternoon of the board meeting, so that we can make sure to get the public the links that they need to have and advise them of the process to log in and so forth to the meeting. At this point, no one had signed up for public comments for this first session. We do have a second opportunity for comments from the public at the end of the meeting, and we do have a couple of folks who have signed up for that. So, since there's no one here for this first opportunity, I'll withhold kind of review of the protocols until the second opportunity. Next, we have approval of monitoring reports. And these are monitoring reports for policies 1,000.2.5 and 1,000.2.8. We received these reports on October 4th, and the board had an opportunity to review them at that time and then responded to a survey to identify whether the superintendent is in compliance with all aspects of this particular policy 2.5, which is on asset protection. All five board members responded to the survey, and all five agreed that the superintendent is in compliance with all aspects of the, of the policy. And there were no comments from board members, and there was no indication that we need to do any changes to the policy at that time. The second is policy 1,000.2.8, which is compensation and benefits. All five board members responded to the survey, and all five agreed that the superintendent is in compliance with all elements of this survey as well, and there were no comments or requests to adjust the policy. Are there any questions from board members? Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval of the monitoring reports for 1,000.2.5 and 1,000.2.8.
Still moved.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Raymond. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Barb, could you call the roll, please?
President Martha Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you, Barb. Next, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an accumulation of actions that can be dispensed of with one vote of the board. These are actions that have been delegated to the superintendent, but by law must be approved by the board. Items that are on the consent agenda are voted on as a block and approved with one vote. Any board member has the right to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate action and/or discussion. Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay.
I was, I was looking for, in the minutes, for something that I, that I, that I not had concern, but, and I can't find it yet.
Do you know which meeting it was for, Raymond?
It's when we approved the, we approved the plans to purchase that new building off of First Avenue.
Oh, okay. I'd have to go through the minutes to, to find that, figure out.
So, yeah, I, I found it. It just, I like to kind of, I would like to reword that, my statement.
Okay.
So, if I could remove that.
You want, do you know which meeting it was?
Yeah, it's, I have it right here in front of me. It is September 27th.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that, that my quotes are clear and
Okay.
for the public, so.
So, if there's no objection from board members, we'll remove September 22nd, 27th?
Yes.
Meeting minutes from this agenda? We'll look at the language to be reviewed and then review that at the next meeting. Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, tonight's consent agenda then consists of the approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes for September 13 and 21, with September 27 being pulled, approval of personnel actions, and notification of approval of warrants. Tonight's warrants consist of two groups of ASB funds, four groups of general fund funds, and one group of payroll funds. And that concludes the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Raymond. Is there any discussion? Okay, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda are our action items. We have quite a few tonight. The first one is a permission to renew the contract with the Yakima Police Department for the 2021 to 2022 school year for school district security resource officers, SROs. Stacy?
Thank you, President Rice. So, the requested action is that the Board of Directors grants permission to renew the contract with Yakima Police Department for the 21-22 school year for Yakima School District's SROs. The YSD strategic plan alignment as a priority, it provides physical, mental health, and well-being supports, strategic goal plan, empowered, connected, supported, and engaged. The fiscal impact for this year will be $505,718. Background information, the Yakima Police Department provides school resource officers for our three high schools and one to two officers for our middle schools. The contract renewal is for the 21-22 school year and is in the amount of $505,718. The 2020-21 contract was in the amount of $688,456.97, but was reduced to $416,899.01 due to COVID-19, and our SROs working 71 days less as a result.
Thank you, Stacy. Are there any questions from board members? Okay, the board is being asked to grant permission to renew the contract with Yakima Police Department for the 2021 to 2022 school year for the Yakima School District SROs. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Raymond. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Yep, President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. Next action item is that the Board of Directors approves the purchase of 2,500 laptops for student use. These laptops will replace end-of-life devices issued to students. Stacy, again?
Whoops. Sorry about that, I lost my place.
That's okay. When you do read them, Patty's just asking that we slowed down once again. Thank you.
Sorry.
I was just reading that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder, Patty. So, the requested action, Andy just spoke to this briefly, that the Board of Directors approves the purchase 2,500 laptops for student use. These laptops will replace end-of-life devices issued to students. YSD strategic plan alignment. This purchase furthers the district's efforts in resource alignment to the strategic plan, notably to support Goals 2 and 3. The fiscal impact, the device cost of this purchase is $445.69 for a total amount of $1,206,704.69. The district was awarded $1 million from the Emergency Connectivity Fund, ECF, to offset the cost. Background information, the ECF funding award requires the district to front fund this purchase, after which, the ECF program will reimburse the district up to $1 million of the total cost.
Thank you, Stacy. Are there any questions from board members? I just wish we could come up with a different phraseology than end-of-life devices. There's got to be a better phraseology that we could use for that. Okay, the board is requested to approve the purchase of 2,500 laptops for student use. These laptops will replace end-of-life devices issued to students. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Raymond, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Okay, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you very much. Next, we have an action item on a resolution for, Resolution Number 20.20.21, levy certification. Becky?
Thank you, President Rice. The requested action is that the Board of Directors approves, approves Resolution 20. 20.21 levy certification. The fiscal impact is the continuing revenue source for the operations of the district. Background information pursuant to RCW 84.52.020, our certification for the purpose of levying 2022 property taxes is to be filed with the Board of Yakima County Commissioners yearly. The levy amounts for the general fund and the debt service fund were approved in the annual budget. For the 2022 tax collection year, the general fund levy amount is $15,282,497. The debt service fund levy amount is 7.9 million. The strategic plan alignment, these resources provide financial support for the five goals for the five goals defined within the district's strategic plan.
Thank you, Becky. Any questions from board members? Hearing none. We've been asked that the Board approve Resolution 20.20.21, levy certification.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Raymond, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Barb, could you call the roll, please?
President Rice? Mr. Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Mr. Walker? Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. Next item is permission to contract with Kinderhoffen Partners LLC for the 2021 to 22 school year. Dr. Darling?
Yes, hello again, board members. So we are requesting that the Board of Directors grant permission to contract with Kinderhoffen Partners LLC for the 202122 school year for the amount of $462,000 to provide nursing services for our students with special needs.
Are there any questions from board members? Okay. The board has been, is being asked to grant permission to contract with Kinderhoffen Partners LLC for the 2021 to 2022 school year in the amount of $462,000 to provide nursing services to support students with special needs. Is there any, do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Raymond, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Barb, could you call the roll, please?
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Mr. Walker? Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. Next item is permission to increase current contract with Fox Hire LLC for the 2021 to 2022 school year in the amount of $120,000. Dr. Darling?
Thank you, Director Rice. So a couple of weeks ago, the Board approved a request for $300,000 for Fox Hire to add additional SLPs, and we are one short. So this request is to increase the amount from 300,000 to 420,000 to add an additional speech-language pathologist for the school year for the Yakima School District.
Are there any questions from board members? These speech-language pathologists, Rob, they are all, they, they're not assigned to a specific school. They're all over the place, right?
They will work at a, they might work at one school, they might work at multiple schools, but they will remain consistent through that schedule through the year. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. For example, I know that one SLP that we have from New York, she works at two elementary schools and then Discovery Lab part-time as well.
Okay, so there's consistency with the speech-language pathologists and the students that they're assigned to?
Yeah, the, yeah, exactly.
Perfect, okay. All right, the Board is being asked to grant permission to increase the current contract with Fox Hire LLC from 300,000 to 420,000. This additional $120,000 will provide the district one more speech and language pathologist. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Raymond. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Barb, could you call the roll, please?
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you very much. We've reached the second opportunity for comments from the public. I do know that we have a couple of, or at least one, possibly two, people who indicated that they would like to speak to the Board during this time. So I'm just going to review some of the protocols that we have set in place for, for our public comment periods. Speakers will be treated in a respectful manner. The Board does not typically engage in dialogue at the time or respond to items that are not on the agenda. The audience is expected to give their attention to the speakers. Members of the public are asked to introduce themselves and state all affiliations with the district. keep your comments to three minutes if possible so that all have a chance to be heard. Speak only once if you're speaking on an agenda item. Refrain from discussing the performance of an employee or the interpretation or application of the district's labor agreements, including grievances, and refrain from making derogatory comments about individuals. So we have with us, I know we've, I know we have John Puccinelli with us, and I believe Frances McSherry. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're together. There they are.
Okay, gentlemen, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay, my name is Frances McSherry. I've been with transportation for 26 years.
And my name is John Puccinelli. I've been with transportation for 17 years. We are here on our own and do not represent anybody else. But we do feel that many of the drivers down there feel the same way as we do. And it's important to, for you to know. We are thankful to you for the very way you've treated us during this coronavirus 19 pandemic. In 2020, many of the school districts told their drivers, "Go ahead and collect unemployment, and we won't fight it." Well, they received some money, but they lost all of their benefit package. The Yakima School District gave the drivers a choice. We could go collect our unemployment, or we could work in different departments that had openings. And we would also be able to, if we weren't getting our regular contract hours, we would be able to get some unemployment. This contributed so that, helped us all so that we were made whole during this period of time. The policy allowed drivers to earn about the same money as they would have in a regular session. But more important, we received our benefit package and our medical insurance. And when there's a pandemic, medical insurance takes on a whole new light. The district hired a person, Stephanie Arnold, to help us get our unemployment that we had coming. And Stephanie worked with the state unemployment offices to help us go through that horrible maze. And anybody who experienced that knows what, how frustrating that could be. The people who tried to collect unemployment went through a lot. Stephanie did a great job for us. It has been said that a teetotaler applied for unemployment but became an alcoholic before she got her first check. During this terrible coronavirus pandemic, having a job and being able to pay our bills and having medical insurance went a long way in helping us maintain order in our life. We've been able to work every day, and that is a blessing. We are grateful to the school board. We are grateful to our superintendent in the way this was handled. It showed all of us down there that you really care for us and you care about our well-being. Thank you.
John spoke to the, what the school board has had done and, and very, with, with very much care, and we really do appreciate that. I, I want to address, I've been there for 26 years, and I've seen, you know, a lot of folks come and go. And I want to speak specifically, specifically to the environment. It's up, up until this current administration, and I, I'm not just, you know, ringing someone else's bell, but up until this current administration, we've, we had um, nothing less of a toxic, I hate to say this, but we just never had a good partnership with the central office. And so what I, what, what I want to do is, is thank the Board or whoever, whoever was influential in, in recruiting and hiring the current superintendent and, and his team. The atmosphere down there, honestly, I can't tell you what it was or what he said or what anyone said, but the atmosphere down at the Transportation Office has turned 180 degrees. And it, it is, you could, you could talk to anyone down there, and you would, you would see that there is, is something very healthy that's come from this, this new superintendent's team. So anyway, I never thought I'd ever be here to address the school board. I wasn't prepared, not very refined, but I just want to let you guys know that we are entirely grateful. One thing is that you found the current superintendent because he's been a breath of fresh air, and that's an original statement, by the way.
It, it, it's fun to go to work now. And you've allowed us by contracting out, you used to give them to, to the private bus carriers. You allow us now to work. That allows our drivers to earn more money. It, it's going a long ways to helping all of the drivers pay their bills. These new policies just really are, are a blessing for us. We're done. Thank you.
Can you hear? We can't hear.
I have to do that once a meeting, whether I need to or not.
Okay.
Um, thank you so much for your comments. It's nice to hear something positive at a school board meeting every once in a while. We appreciate our transportation folks. You guys stepped in when we needed the help really bad during this past year, and we were happy to be able to provide an opportunity for you to maintain your, your benefits package. And if you didn't get full salary, then work yourselves through the maze of unemployment. So thank you so much for being here tonight. I know that the superintendent, he posted a note, says you made his month. So, and since we're almost to the end of the month, that says an awful lot. Thank you so much for being here tonight, for hanging out with us through a pretty long school board meeting. And I just want to thank you for all your service. Between just the two of you, you have 43 years of service to the district. That's, that's amazing, driving those big yellow buses for 43 years. It's, I just can't imagine it.
Martha, if I may, I just want to ditto what Martha, our president, said. Thank you for all your hard work. It's good to see you, Mr. Mayor, as well. It's been some time. But thank you for all, for all that you guys do and through the tough times, through the pandemic, and keeping those buses rolling and everything else that you do. So, and it was indeed a good report. Thank you.
Well, I, I just think it's important that the Board realize what you're doing is being appreciated. We, it, it's going to go a long ways to us being able to do a better job, and everybody's a winner when that happens.
Thank you, Raymond. Norm, do you have anything to add?
Well, yeah, I just, I also wanted to just thank you for your comments. And, you know, I, I've always remembered that our bus drivers are the ones that are the first ones to see the kids in the morning and the last ones to drop them off at night. And sometimes you're the ones that can set a kid's day right or make him feel better if it didn't go so good. So you're really important to us, and we value what you do. And, and again, I'd like to compliment Trevor and Anthony for, for really helping put all this together for you. And thanks so much. And also wanted to say to Frances, say hi to Mary for me.
Well, there, Barb. Thank you.
Yakima's a small town, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, gentlemen, for being with us this evening. We're going to close out our meeting, I think. Mr. Superintendent, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not have need for an executive session.
Um, Anthony just posted a note here. Please don't forget Stacy Locke and her leadership at transportation. True enough.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Stacy is like the glue that holds everything in the district together. I mean, she's safety and security and nursing services and transportation. I don't know what else there is that she doesn't touch, but thank you, Stacy, for, thank you, Stacy, for doing all of, all that you do and helping to make sure that, that our folks are taken care of. We do not have a need for executive session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Stacy?
Martha, could I just give a shout out? And Anthony was instrumental behind creating the opportunity for our transportation to stay intact and to have a living wage during the initiation of the pandemic. And so I have to backshot to him for all the work he did, bringing in new ideas and new ways to sustain their positions and, and keep them whole. And thank you very much, Martha, for, for all your kind words. Much appreciated. Thank you.
I think I just gave you a new nickname.
Uh-oh, what was that?
Glue.
Well, I'll, I'll take it. I've seen worse.
Maybe that, maybe Trevor can come up with another award, the glue award.
It's got to be super glue, though, not just any kind of glue.
There you go. All right. Okay, we're going to, I'm going to adjourn the meeting before we get too much farther down this road. We could come up with a lot of different awards, I think, if we let this go. So thank you, Frances, and thank you, John, for being with us this evening. Thank you to everyone who hung out with us all night long. If we have any retirees still hanging in there with us, thank you so much for everything that you've done over the years for our students and with our students. We will see you at next month's business meeting. Thank you to Patty for putting up with our speedy talk throughout, throughout this evening's meeting and translating so capably for us. If there's nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, and you're probably home already, and if you're not, drive safely going home. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Frances.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Frances.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John, you're always my mayor. You're the one I remember growing up, so thank you.